Good evening and welcome to the Pickle City Special Commission Meeting, Tuesday, July 30th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. Let's start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Vedder.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
President.
Commissioner Homan.
Here.
Commissioner DeBross.
Here.
Next on our agenda, and I'll need a motion to amend the agenda because we're going to follow the same rules and format as in past special commission meetings.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Patrissio, it's my understanding that in special meetings, the way that these have been conducted in the past is that there is essentially just the business agenda. There is no commissioners' comments, there's no city managers' report, and there's no public comment. Is that correct?
That's correct. What happened is it was printed out in error, and it's just that there's public comments.
There is public comment on each item, though.
There is on the items, but there is not at the end of the meeting.
Those sections. It's just the business meeting portion.
That's correct. All right. Thank you.
In your business, we just move to close?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to amend this agenda to reflect the precedent that has been set for special meetings of the Pickle City Commission. To remove from this agenda, the city managers' report, the commissioners' comments, and public comments.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. First on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Approval of the minutes from the July 16, 2024 Regular City Commission Meeting.
Any comments from commissioners about that? Citizens?
Move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. Now on to old business.
Ordinance number O-9-24, third reading. An ordinance allocating adult-use cannabis, marijuana, excise tax revenue.
Which department is... Frank?
I can handle this. This is basically what we've talked about the previous two times. The state of Ohio has put an excise tax, a sales tax on sale of marijuana. It's 10%. And I believe it allowed, I don't have the ordinance right in front of me, but 36% of that excise, that 10%, would come to the city of Pickle to do whatever the city of Pickle wishes to do with it. The city of Pickle has determined that they will allocate this money towards the park system.
Questions from commissioners? None? Questions from citizens?
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number O-9-24.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of ordinance number O-9-24, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, we need a roll call. I'm sorry. It's an ordinance.
Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBross.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Homan.
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder.
Aye.
All right. Next in old business is ordinance number O-11-24, a third reading.
An ordinance permitting the commission to remove appointed representatives from boards created by the commission.
This ordinance was requested from the commission and allowed the commission to remove people from various boards created from them if the commission so desires by the majority of vote.
Any questions from commissioners?
I might request a personal moment to reread these and make sure that the amendments we had done previously are still in place.
While you're doing that, any questions from citizens?
Nicholas Mark, 1433 Covington Avenue. Is this just for boards that you guys have formulated? And those are the people that sit on these boards, right?
Yeah, there's been no, there was no way to remove people from boards prior to this.
Okay, so this is starting from here on, this is something that you guys are establishing?
Yeah, previously, there was only mechanisms written out for dissolving boards, but there wasn't, and not even all of them, but there wasn't a way to go after individual members for any particular reason. And I think we've got, what, 10, 12 different boards, maybe 30, 40 different people on there. The possibility that something may come up, there might be some reason, as I'd said in previous commission meetings, maybe there's a new view of the city and there's an election that causes a lot of new commissioners to arrive unseen, and they want to be able to exercise what the new will of the people is by changing out some board members. Maybe some board members have misconduct. Maybe there's no reason for that board to exist anymore. Just various reasons that may or may not come up, but there wasn't a mechanism to do that before.
Okay.
Be aware that there have been several occasions when board people have, their behavior has come under scrutiny, and we became aware that there was no opportunity to censure slash remove.
So this is in response to that?
This is a result of that.
Okay, and this is in response to that. Does this apply to the commission kind of, I would say, policing themselves?
So the commission can, by charter, by four votes, can remove members of the commission for cause.
Yeah, there's already a mechanism.
There's already a mechanism. There's already something about that.
They'll each other, I guess.
Thanks for enlightening me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Did you review that?
Yeah.
Anything?
No.
Anything?
I still am uncomfortable with the fact that there's absolutely nothing in here that speaks to the, with reason, or for reason. So we spoke about, someone might have had, you know, their behavior questioned, but there's nothing in here. We could just sit there and go, well, we want this person out because we just don't like him. And vote, and boom, they're gone. And here, they volunteered their time. And so, as written, I cannot support this.
I just responded to that with, yeah, and I think that's kind of the, part of the point of it, too, the flip side of that is, and there's been recent examples of this, of boards or committees that maybe don't, have grown to not reflect the views of the city. And then there's been elections of new commissioners, and new commissioners are unable to execute on that new will of the people. And so, the reason may just be because there was a new election, a new view of the city, or perhaps the board has gone rogue. So, yeah, I think that's kind of the idea, is that it's, it is open-ended, and we are charged with exercising right reason and good judgment.
But we don't always do that. And so, the, with this being the way it is, again, if, part of the problem is that, you know, we might get new commissioners in, and they might be following the quote-unquote "new will of the people." If we're going to do that, the best solution, I would think, would be to take these four-year positions that we have on board and make them two-year positions. You renew every two years, just like we...
I'd be willing to entertain that ordinance.
At some point. Go ahead, Kim.
Kim Heisler, 1802 West Parkway.
Thank you.
And you guys might have already addressed this, but this is specifically like for, you're talking about like individual members as opposed to coming together and not liking what a group that was created, volunteering their time, not getting rid of the whole group, right? You're talking individuals.
I believe there's already a mechanism. I think that the mechanism we have right now is to dissolve whole committees, but there's not a way of using a more fine brush. I think we've only got a mallet. So I think we already have that ability to just dissolve various committees.
In the past, there've been individual people who are serving on boards that have displayed conduct and things, and this is in the past.
Right, and I understand.
Have done things, so it's for individuals, not whole boards.
Okay. And with that being said, there's places that I've worked before where, you know, managers won't say anything. They won't say anything. They continue to see stuff happen with individuals, and then they just, is there any kind of measure to like step in and say, hey, we're going to give you one more chance, or is it like all or nothing? Or you've already expressed so many times that we just can't handle it anymore? Is there any, you know what I'm saying?
Well, there's no mechanism whatsoever right now. And this creates a mechanism.
Okay, I didn't know if there would be something else in there to give them, hey, you know, it's a warning, you're on a fine line, and I was just, I was just curious.
Nope.
I do like the point that she made, though. There's, you said this creates the mechanism. This creates the mechanism for the hangman's noose, but it does not create the mechanism for giving the folks that are in these committees a means of having like a corrective action plan. So if there is someone who's, if their behavior's not criminal, but there's something left to be desired, that we could go up to that person and say, look, you know, this is, this is how things are supposed to be, and this is how things are, and you need to get them back to closer where they were supposed to be, or else we're going to have to take...
I don't know if there's anything...
We've done that in the past.
I don't know that there's anything that says that we couldn't do that still.
Yeah.
It's just that those are kind of...
We've done that.
As of right now, without this ordinance, and you kind of reprimand, it's just kind of a letter to Santa Claus. It doesn't, it doesn't have anything to it. Whereas now, we could, there's nothing preventing us from still doing some kind of formal, we'll call it a demerit of sorts, and then, you know, saying, hey, you know, if this happens again, we're going to have to remove you. But I still, I'll go back to the idea of new commission with elections, with new ideas from the citizens. You know, there's a particular incident from two or three years ago where one of the committees was, had the authority to act without the oversight of the commission. The commission didn't have any way of responding to that. There was election. I think that there was some new ideas as to how we wanted that committee to act, and what we wanted them to, what direction we wanted them to take the city. And there just wasn't a mechanism to respond to that. And so the citizens were really just left at the whim of these five-year appointments with no ability, regardless of the election cycle, to respond to that in any way.
Mr. Mayor, I would move the approval of...
Excuse me. Can I recommend a quick amendment to it? I would ask that at the end of section one, that there's also a sentence at the end of, under chapter 32 of the Pickle City Code, that you also add or fill pursuant to the charter.
Or what?
Positions filled pursuant to the charter.
Can you give any examples of positions that have been in compass that are not already?
Planning commission is charter-driven.
Is this, is that addition in compliance? I assume that's in compliance with other laws and statutes.
I just want to make it clear that even though that that board was created under the charter, that you're removing the position, that, because the way it's written right now, it says only boards created by that chapter.
So it wouldn't apply to the planning?
It wouldn't apply to the planning commission. It's my understanding that you wish to have it applied to the planning commission. If that's the case, then we need to put that line up in there.
Do any commissioners have any comments on that?
I don't have any objection to that.
No.
No, I just have a couple of questions for you. How are members appointed to the planning commission?
How the city commission appoints them.
What's it take to get appointed to the planning commission?
Let me pull up the charter on that, if you'd give me just a minute.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, while he's looking that up, you might, you might just remember off the top of your head, it's my understanding that we've had a pretty large increase in the number of boards and committees over the last three or four years.
Yeah, we didn't have diversity. We added that back. I can't, yeah, the historic one that we just added.
Utility board.
Utility board. We've got a lot of boards.
So I think it's, I think the boards and even making more boards is a great way of getting citizen engagement, citizen input. But again, I don't know that it's necessarily...
And we plan on doing the rental inspection committee, so...
So I just think that the citizens do need to be able to have some ability through the election process of pushing the city into a new direction if they think that some of the boards are not reflective of that. I think this gives the commission the ability to do that. As for, I guess, potential malfeasance, the Commissioner Simmons is, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but potentially suggesting. I think that remains a potential danger that anybody could get elected to the commission and act maliciously. I don't know that this gives them any particularly additional ability to do that, maybe a little bit, but I think that the...
Actually, it does.
But it doesn't allow unilateral action. I mean, this would still require a majority vote, right? So you'd need three, we'll call them rogue commissioners.
You ready, Frank?
Give me just a second. I'm sure, I can't locate it real quickly, but the reality, the city commission appoints the people of the planning commission, and they're appointed by the city commission.
And how many votes of the commission does it take to receive appointment?
No, I mean, all appointments require three votes.
For the planning commission?
Any commission.
What about the utility board?
Same. Every commission requires...
What about the park board?
In order to have any legislation or anything passed, there has to be three votes in the city of Pickle.
So if I decide if this ordinance passes, that I would like someone removed from the planning commission, I cannot do that myself?
It would require three votes.
Okay. My other question for you is if someone from the utility board, or the park board, or pick whichever board you would like, is convicted of a crime, is there anything currently in the charter that would remove said person from that committee?
I mean, the city commissioners could vote to remove one of their own members, but there's nothing else in the, in the code that would promote...
Got it. So if someone from the utility board was convicted of a crime, whether it be a misdemeanor or a felony, there is no way for the commission, or anyone in the city for that manner, to remove that person from the board that they serve on unless they choose to resign themselves?
That's correct. And I assume that if, even if that were to take place in this type of ordinance, with this type of ordinance, that somebody would approach them and say, hey, you need to resign, and I would hope they would do that, and that this would only take place if they did not resign.
I would hope they would do the same also, but it is a little bit troubling to me that even pursuing these worst-case scenarios, that I could also see someone, you know, willing to, I mean, we did have a member of Congress who was convicted and sent to prison and ran for Congress from jail, right? So, you know, these, these instances are rare, but they do happen. And I think it would be in the city's best interest to protect ourselves from something like that happening here.
To expand on that point, I think that there always exists the possibility for corruption with any public position. The, currently, the city is at risk of an unbounded corruption for the remainder of the appointment of any particular board member. Whereas with this ordinance, we then flip that, and then the risk becomes that three rogue commissioners are corrupt for one time to eliminate a position, but not actually doing anything other than just eliminating that position. I think that this flips that risk profile more positively for the citizenry and shrinks it to the extent that is possible.
So he asked for an amendment?
I would like for, to have an amendment, because Frank actually brought a really good, sorry, Commissioner DeBross, we should be formal here, although I like Frank. Anyway. He brought up a really good point in that we don't have anything in place for if someone on one of these boards is, has demonstrably shown malfeasance of office or has committed a crime. And so if we could just put that at the end of section one, upon the, that we could vote to remove them, upon the demonstration or presentation of evidence to show that board member has committed a crime, or has shown malfeasance of office for the board that they're on.
Satisfies what you want. Frank, we still need to add in what Frank wants, because we got to fill the charter approved boards as well.
We'll do, let's just do one at a time. I'll move to amend ordinance O-11-24 to add the language that Mr. Patrissio had mentioned earlier. Can you repeat that, please?
Or fill positions to the charter.
Just add at the end of that first sentence, or fill pursuant to the charter.
So moved.
I'll second that, because that addresses charter positions.
And I did find that section is section 94 of the charter.
Okay, hold on.
And it is, it is filled by the commissioners.
You want to wait?
No, let's vote on it.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. What section say, Frank?
It's section 94 of the charter.
Okay.
But don't put that in there, because it could, just leave it in general in case there's another one in there.
We just pursue it to the charter. Okay. And then your amendment?
Would be at the end of the first sentence. So it'd be, any member of any board may be removed upon a majority vote of the Pickle City Commission. Instead of a period, it would be comma, upon presentation of evidence that said board member has either committed a crime, or has demonstrated malfeasance of office for the board that they serve on.
I don't see where that's a bad, that's not a bad, Frank, what do you think?
I defer to the other, Mr. Patrissio, malfeasance.
That hurt us at all?
What's the legal, I mean...
Yeah, what's the legal? Is it malfeasance, or is it...
So by adding that language, it's a limiting language.
Yes.
The ordinance would then be limited to only those situations.
Right.
That's correct.
I would go back to the example previously of the, and I guess I'll be more explicit, of the planning commission making a decision a few years ago that I think a lot of the citizens disagreed with. And then there was elections, and there was a pretty large changeover in the commission, yet the commission was unable to do anything about the planning commission, even though that was the will of the citizens. And that didn't involve any kind of malfeasance. It was just a change in the view of the citizenry, which they have the right to do, and that's why we, that's why we have elections, and not just, you know, it's not that you guys vote to appoint commissioners in perpetuity. That's why we have elections, so that, you know, the voices and the will can be updated from time to time.
And be aware that on several other occasions, comments made from various board people have been viewed as either sexist, or racist, or inappropriate kinds of comments.
Didn't do anything about it.
That goes to malfeasance.
Well, so now, now malfeasance now means anything.
I'm not a lawyer, that's why I don't...
Right. To me, anyway, it would, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. But...
I may limit it, though.
To Commissioner Vedder's notion about this, the bit about, like where the planning commission was, made a decision, and then later on, it turned out that that decision was extremely unpopular.
To say the least.
That's, that's the thing that we can resolve through term limitations, and possibly even we can look at making things like the planning commission, make those an elected, make it an elected position.
By comments, we're not about the planning commission.
Oh, sorry. But I meant, you know, other things that were done historically with committees.
And for that reason, I, my feeling is that, that malfeasance is a legal definition which limits the reasons why a person might be, might be removed even though there are other issues.
I can see where, and I don't even disagree with it, it's from like a more of a commoner's perspective rather than a lawyer's perspective, that racial epithets might rise to the level of, you know, misconduct, in my opinion, but that goes to a court, and then the court says, well, it's First Amendment protected speech, not malfeasance, and then we are unable to do anything about it.
So we don't limit it?
So it becomes, I don't, I don't, I understand your position of what you're attempting to do. I don't know that that word, that word might hang us up legally and restrict us to the point of not being useful in those instances.
In that case, I would move that we table this until we can resolve it, rather than just pass it and give it all a blank check.
Well, it doesn't give us all a blank check. It gives us a, the same voting power and the majority that we always would have. I don't know that it gives any particular person a blank check, and I don't know that, it's difficult for me to think of three different commissioners all in unison, and as I was kind of saying, tongue-in-cheek, that it'd be three rogue commissioners, because that's majority. That's how we operate. And I don't know that three commissioners voting on something could be described as going rogue.
So in regards to his motion to table, can I get a second? Okay. So not going to be a motion to table.
Okay. How about my amendment?
In regards to his amendment, restate it for us, please.
Okay. So at the end of the first sentence of paragraph two in section one, any member of the board may be removed upon majority vote of the Pickle City Commission, comma, upon presentation of, in fact, we don't have to use malfeasance, upon presentation of evidence that a crime has been committed, or we could say serious misconduct has been committed by said board member. And making sexist and racist remarks would be considered serious misconduct. Any place you go to work at, you're going to wind up talking to the folks in HR.
Still limiting, Frank?
It's still a limiting clause. I mean, it's a little broader. I understand what the commissioner, why the commissioner is requesting it, and that's up to the commission to decide.
So what if you change this language a little bit and say, any member can be removed the majority vote of the city commission for reasons such as, but not limited to, conviction of a crime, conduct detrimental to the city, or malfeasance, whatever word you want to use, and leave it at that?
It's still fairly broad when you do the, but not limited to, yeah, language. When you do that, you broaden it up to almost...
But we're giving at least some specific reasons, that would...
There's at least three in there, yeah.
Trigger this.
Right. It at least says that, hey, we gotta have a reason for this, just not, we don't like it.
Right. But we don't.
Mr. Patrizio, does the city have a general code of, I'm sorry for interrupting you. Um, does the city have a general code of conduct for employees and for commissioners?
Well, all employees and commissioners are, have fiduciary obligations to the city of Pickwa.
Do we have any kind of, I, I believe, I think I signed or oathed some kind of ethics thing. Is there any kind of?
Signed an oath. You, you, you signed an oath to follow the laws of the city of Pickwa, the state of Ohio and, and the United States Constitution is what that oath was.
So we don't have like?
There's not a.
We don't have like a generalized code of conduct?
There is not a generalized code of ethics for the commissioners.
Mr. City managers, are anything that you're aware of to a code of conduct?
Police officers and, and various employees have ethical obligations.
Yeah, there's not a code of conduct, but there are some elected boards that do choose to have their rules be specific to that. So that could be something that you consider.
Put, perhaps, um, creating a generalized code of conduct for those positions might, uh, be kind of a companion document to this that would list out some of those reasons, but not limited to.
I'd, I'd be able to.
I, I just talked to chief over here. He says, the city, the employees of the city of Pickwa have a code of conduct. Um, whether you wanna apply that to, to board members and things of that nature, you certainly could create something, but.
I suppose the point I'm attempting to make is that it's not a mystery necessarily to people who are appointed to board positions that there are certain standards that they're meant to abide themselves by. But.
Let's get back to the amendments.
Right now, you have Commissioner Simmons' motion on the table, on the floor.
Well, I was gonna go, because he agreed with, uh, Frank, Commissioner DeBrass's, uh, amendment.
Who did?
Paul did. Paul did. So.
You only, to move to amend the language?
No, just, yes, make the motion.
I wanna move to move, be make to amend.
Yes.
There's a move, no, no, no.
You know it.
Help me here and make sure I get this right. Please.
So we should have, if, if we should have, Mr. Simmons' motion dies for lack of a second and then?
Yep. His motion will die for lack of a second.
Now, we'll, we'll put his motion forward.
All right. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to amend ordinance number O dash eleven dash twenty-four to read as.
Section one, paragraph two, to read.
Section one, paragraph two, to read as follows. Any member of any board may be removed upon a majority vote of the Pickle City Commission for reasons such as, but not limited to, the conviction of a crime, malfeasance, or conduct detrimental to the city of Pickwa.
Correct. And then the rest of it read as?
And then the rest of it remains.
And he made that motion. I need a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, now, I need a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
Mayor, may I request a roll call on the amendment?
If you want, yeah. We don't need a roll call for the amendment. We need one for the ordinance. But go ahead.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Nay.
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBrass?
Aye.
All right. Now, I need a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I need a roll call, please.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBrass?
Aye.
All right. Ordinance passes.
Some real legislation.
There you go. That's how government works. Next on the agenda is ordinance number O dash twelve dash twenty-four, second reading.
An ordinance to repeal Pickwa Code thirty point one five in its entirety and to adopt new rules for commission.
This is an ordinance that changes how the city commission will operate. Will divide the meeting into two parts. One part will be the business agenda and the second part will be the non-public agenda comment period. And then there's a rules of conduct that, that have been, uh, set forth for both of the meet, for the, both meetings. Uh, I have made the amendment that, amendments that Mr. Homan had requested at the prior meeting and they are included in this recent draft.
Is there a five-minute break between both parts?
I didn't put that in. That's the mayor's responsibility, but I would.
We would put a break in between so that, uh, commissioners and citizens could go to the bathroom and then we'll come back for public comment.
That's correct.
So the business part and then a break for five minutes and then public comment.
I would not put that, need, I don't think there's a need to put that in the rules, but, but, yes, I would make that recommendation also.
Any other comments from commissioners? Any comments from citizens?
Kim Heisler, eighteen oh two West Parkway Drive. Um, I understand you guys need rules and, and stuff like that, but it just seems like ever so slowly you're taking, um, you're limiting us as to what we should do, how long we should do it and stuff like that. So I still strongly suggest no to signing in and writing down our questions prior. I really feel that limits a lot of people. I mean, sometimes there's not many people that show up, but if they show up late and they just spur of the moment, they're not gonna wanna do that. It just becomes a roadblock.
That's why we've got twelve, which I fought pretty hard to get stuck in here. Twelve, if during non-agenda public comment sections, the public comment cards have been exhausted and the meeting has not been concluded, individuals who have not spoken may request to do so until the conclusion of the meeting.
Okay. And at the same time, it still really limits or places an extra burden on us, the people, to actually write that down. I know it takes like two minutes to do that, but if you're going, if you're going downtown and you have two detours to go, most likely you're gonna wait to the end of the week until the detours are over to get there. So I guess my point is, it's just, it's so limiting that the people that don't, that maybe get the courage to speak, as soon as they put it down in writing, then they lose that courage.
Well, that's, that's why I'm saying though, is twelve says you, you don't have to put it in writing, um, but you don't get a line, which.
What, what benefits though, well, well, let me just ask this so I can get through my questions. And then, how does it benefit you guys that we do that? So that, that's just one question. You don't have to answer, cause I wanna make sure I get, maybe afterwards. Um, and also, and I didn't read, maybe you guys made changes in there from, from last time. I printed it out, but I didn't read it. So I could, I maybe could've missed something. But I think there was still a time limit as to maybe a nine o'clock timeframe or a specific timeframe. And I also say no to that also because, you know, who's to say something doesn't happen and we have fifty people that wanna speak, but because there was a lot on the agenda, we only had like maybe twenty minutes, so therefore only four people could speak at five minutes apiece. And you have all these other people not being able to speak in this forum. I understand there's other ways to do it, but if it takes twelve hundred and fifty of us to make a change, then you should be willing to listen to more than four people if you got twenty minutes or, or what have you. Maybe we could go to a different day or something like that. But I, I mean, it's, it's a huge responsibility to be on the commission. And it, to me, it seems like you would be shutting us down. That's not the right word, but it just seems like it's another, again, limitation that you're putting on the people.
There's so many venues and, and ways to talk to us other than coming up during public comment.
I understand that. And sometimes the power of the people shows up in numbers, not necessarily calling, not necessarily writing.
They can show up in other venues and numbers.
And I've, I've written, um, some letters to you guys. I get zero response back.
I think you wrote back, didn't you?
A couple of times I have, but I've also written and I've got, I mean, it would be, it would be nice to say, hey, I got your response. I will, I'll take a look at it. Just to make sure that I've even gotten the right email address.
You are so welcome to come on Wednesdays between four and six as well. And any other time you'd like to set up an appointment over there after four, after, after I get off work, I'd be more than happy to come talk to you.
Okay. And, and I'd like to say to the citizens out there, speak up, cause this is the second reading. And if you guys feel the same, please call or write them, show up next meeting, whatever you need to do. I, I really don't think it's just me, but it just seems like it's limiting. Um, and then my other, uh, question, let me make sure I got it here, is, tonight was a special meeting. What constitutes a special commission meeting? I mean, who, how does that come about?
It's not the first or third, um, meeting of the month. So it's outside the normal, uh, meeting times.
Okay.
So it's a special meeting.
And that's what constitutes no public comment?
That and we're not having a meeting on.
Thirty seconds.
We're not having a meeting, um, August sixth because all the commissioners are going to National Night Out, um, stuff. So there was not gonna be a meeting.
Okay. So it's solely because where it falls is why it becomes a special meeting and why there's no public comment at the end?
Cause it's outside of the normal meeting times, yes.
Also, we didn't have one on the second this month.
I think we had an emergency one last month too, or earlier this month.
Okay, an emergency is the last minute, right?
Time expired.
Right. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Um, so on, about the comment cards and the benefits of, uh, helping us prioritize them. Um, so yeah, some people, um, may not have their idea of what they wanna write down. Um, and it, the, the comment cards aren't write down verbatim exactly what you're gonna say. It's, it's, it's your name, address and, and the topic. I don't even know if it's the topic. Um, but it's, it's, it's not, it's not, you don't have to write a transcript of everything you're gonna say. Um, but what that does is people who come here, um, you know, I'll, I'll use Ruth Kuhn as a great example. Uh, she came to the last commission meeting and stuck it out for three hours, uh, to spend four minutes telling us, um, about the great work she, um, and Main Street Pickwa, um, have been doing with, uh, the mural. And, uh, I, I think it would be nice for people who've got specific things that they wanna talk about. Um, you know, they know about those weeks in advance. They don't necessarily, it's not something that they came up with on the fly. For them to be able to get into a priority lane, um, and put, put their comment card down because they know what they wanna say. Um, for people who, uh, don't, you know, maybe they're just inspired during the meeting that they've got a comment they wanna make. I know that happened to me quite a bit, uh, back when I used to sit out there. Um, there's still room for that too. And that's why I wanted to be able to have, um, people after the comment cards were exhausted, um, if there's still time, people can still come up just like they normally do today. Um, I, I think having both gives us the ability to, uh, keep structure to the meetings. Um, you know, it's not just for, um, specific people that wanna talk. It's for the whole community. Um, and then it also allows for some of that unstructured dialogue as well, where people kind of on the spur of the moment come up with something that they wanna say. Um.
Can she, oh, go ahead.
Can I talk for a second?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I was, I was, Kim asked me to respond to her afterwards, so I didn't use up her time. So that's what I'm, I'm sorry.
Go for it. Go for it.
Yeah. Um, and then as for the, uh, the meeting ending at nine PM or being scheduled to end at nine PM, um, it's, it's very ra- regular that meetings have a scheduled start and stop time. Um, all of my Outlook meetings at work all have scheduled start and stop times. Um, it's actually very uncommon that meetings have scheduled start times but no end times. Um, and so I, I understand, um, to an extent, your point, uh, Kim, about the, it, what it feels like is, is restricting more things or putting boundaries on things. It's really not about that. It's about just, we exist in reality. There's certainly limitations just by, that we exist physically in time. There's only so many hours in the day. Um, i- if there was a, a mechanism by which we could have ten hours of public comment and I still got out to here at seven PM, I would be all for that. Um, but there, there just isn't. Um, the, we're, we're trying to meet with the spirit of the, the First Amendment. And the First Amendment is attempting to create this ideal standard of some perfect mechanism by which we can have freedom of speech. But because we're all human and we're bound by reality, our execution of that is, is notably imperfect and, and bound by time. So there has to be some boundary on it. It can't just be completely unlimited. Now, your, your First Amendment though, is nearly unlimited out on the street. Um, you're, we've had, uh, protests and gatherings out in front of the city, um, and you're free to do so wherever, um, wherever public property exists. Um, and during those sessions, you're unbounded by five minutes or by nine PM. Um, and then as the, uh, the mayor had pointed out, um, we have a lot of other forums where you can come talk to us.
Go right ahead.
Hello?
Kate Daniel, Dr. Lane, ten thirty-eight Nickland Avenue. My question is, the other avenues in which we have to communicate with you, are those actually recorded down and in the minutes kind of thing? Cause that's the point of the public comment, is to make sure that it is available for everyone to read afterwards.
We actually have an example of a big list of questions that made it into the agenda today.
Yeah, we read the agenda. People who ask questions, we record them and who made them. And the city manager answers them. So yes, they're recorded.
And the other meetings outside of this commission too?
Yeah, my Wednesday meetings, yes.
Not at different meetings, so I'm just asking, Chris.
If somebody calls me, if somebody calls me, that's not necessarily recorded, you know? Somebody called me about a problem, I'm not recording that. But on the Wednesday meetings, let's just say two commissioners are there and five people come up, they come up. I write down their question. I send it to the city manager. City manager answers it and it's in the agenda of the next meeting that we have, like tonight.
Okay. I get that. But the point of having public comment at the commission meeting is that it is officially in the minutes. It's not just something you're taking notes of and it, and having addressed later. That's my concern with limiting this stuff. It's not being recorded down.
All right. But you realize we don't have to have public comment?
I am aware that you don't have to. I think it would be highly limiting and problematic if you didn't.
Well, we're not talking about not having.
We're not, not, we're not, not talking about it at all. I'm just saying we don't.
I just find this to be very limiting and I am not digging it. That's what I'm just gonna say.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
We do, we do have in the packet today, uh, which is part of the minutes. Uh, we have, I think, fourteen questions, uh, that were sent by various citizens to the city manager that they requested be part of the public, or part of the, uh, the minutes. Um, and, uh, Mr. Oberdorfer was kind enough to answer those and stick them into the minutes for us. Thank you for that.
Yep. Go right ahead, sir.
Nicholas Mar, fourteen thirty-three Covington Avenue. Um, you know, I know there's many ways that there are different avenues to contact you. However, uh, many of the public, they rely on these broadcasts in this public forum, this format, as a basis for their vote. Um, so I think it's, it's highly important that we keep, you know, this format basically as untouched as we possibly, as, as untouched as we possibly can. Um, right now, tonight, um, I suggest that, uh, this just be tabled. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, I work in healthcare, uh, Mayor, and I have talked about that. Um, uh, I mean, I'll just, I'll give you a riddle, um, if that gives you any impetus to, uh, to table it. I would say that, um, some of the things you're engaging in has, uh, taken you out of ADA compliance. Um, and you've been, been out of ADA compliance for quite some time just from, um, manipulating these, uh, public forums, public comments. So I suggest you table it tonight and just think about this more broadly before you move on and make a quick decision. And then kind of think of along the lines of, you know, healthcare, like I, I talked to you before, I work in healthcare. So think along those lines. Think along, along the lines about who else you might be affecting, okay? Um, by doing this, what, what you, what limitations you might be placing upon others. Um, so that's, that's one reason to. So, that's, that's one reason to table it. And I'll take any feedback from anybody, and I will impress this upon you to not eat your own words, because if I go back and look at other commission meetings, and what you said to these Boy Scouts in here, and how you felt then about the people's voices, then that speaks volumes, and I believe that those are your true intentions. You know, I believe in not limiting the public, I believe, you know, I believe in this format, I believe there's people at home that watch this, and they base their, how they vote on these, on what's said during the public comment, not just, I mean, if I'm contacting one of you personally, they don't know what's said between you or I through an email, this is what they're watching, this is the elderly at home, you know, people that really need to see this. So, and I do back many of Kim's sentiments. Not everyone can attend on Wednesday, I have work on Wednesday, I wish I could attend on Wednesday with you, that sounds like an awesome meeting, but I can't. So, just think about...
Well, if there's a time you'd like to attend, or meet, you're more than welcome to schedule a time, and I'll meet with you.
Well, that sounds cool, too.
All of us are like that, though.
Yeah, I mean, if I could, if I could, I don't know how much time I have left, but, you know, I don't understand the impetus for Mr. Patrizio's recent, I would call it, wanted impositions to alter the public comments, for instance, alluding that public comments are not heard at all by other communities, some communities only allow three minutes for public comment, you know, I don't know, these are just like, like little seeds, you know, it's like, drop little seeds here and there, you know, it's like, I don't know what all started this, I don't know what was the impetus.
Thirty seconds.
Maybe, maybe Mr. Patrizio can elaborate on what the impetus was within himself to start swaying people, or swaying the commission to enact these certain stipulations, like cards and whatnot. I would love for him to elaborate more on that, because I don't, I don't know his world, so, enlighten us on that, and I would love your feedback, thank you.
Any other public comment? That will serve as a second reading, then. Next, noel business is ordinance number O-13-24, a second reading.
An ordinance to make appropriations for the city of Pickwa, Ohio for the year 2024.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, this ordinance amends some of our appropriations, this is the second reading, and there were no changes since the last reading, and I'll take your questions.
Any questions from commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question, I have a comment. Jerry, I, I just want to thank you for the manner in which you have presented this to us. There is zero question, as I reviewed this, where the money was going and why we were doing it, which I know we had some hiccups in that in previous ones, so, I just want to take a minute and say thank you.
You're welcome.
Because you put this in language that even I can understand, and I appreciate that.
Mayor, I would like to second that.
Thank you, Jerry. Any questions from citizens? That will serve as a second reading, then. On to new business, resolution number R-99-24.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Stralzer Construction Incorporated for a portion of the 2024 pavement preservation program.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission, the resolution before you, 9924, is a resolution that is the second and last component of our pavement program for the city of Pickwa. This portion is the Peters, Janet, Gene, and Edge roads, which are being crack sealed and micro-surfaced. If you will recall, previously this year, we approved the mill and overlay portion of our annual pavement program, which included a number of roadways and ADA curb ramps. The expenditure for this is based on the ODOT cooperative bid process, and that number is 106,500, which includes a 10% contingency. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them, but just for some background, these roads are chosen due to their PCI value, and the roads, these four roads are, were paved roughly six to eight years ago, and so the crack sealing and micro-surfacing will extend the life of those roads, as we continue to try to find ways to pave more and protect our roads longer with the pavement program. Are there any questions that I can answer?
How long does the crack seal last?
Crack seals a five to 10-year.
How, how long would these roads last before needing to be completely dug up and redone without this, and how much longer would they be able to go with this?
I mean, I don't know that there's ever going to be a number that is a simple answer to that, you know, I'm, I think all of the roads that we have, as you are all aware, we were authorized to go forward with updating our PCI numbers, and so the goal of that process is to provide a more transparent pavement program, so people can understand the immense effort it takes to pave all the roads in our community. We have budgeted $1 million this year to manage that project, or that process this year, and we are looking at our capital improvements for the future years, so we are always looking at trying to find ways to get that road to be longer. So, you know, if we have X number of millions of dollars to repave all our roads, if we can do crack sealing, and we can do different preservation options, that will allow us to be able to get through all of our roads hopefully sooner. So I don't have a good, I have, you know, maybe, maybe Paul can answer that.
I can just answer that, just in my experience, so when you look at mains and auxiliary roadways that have heavy traffic loading, you're looking at about a 15-year lifespan, and a lot of that's just because of the volume of vehicles, but also the weight of the vehicles. When you get into residential streets, typically they're 20, and if you do take care of the road and do maintenance, 25 years is not unheard of, but certainly having a pavement preservation program, what you're trying to do is, by incrementally putting maintenance effort into the roadway, you're extending that life out to 30 years. And so ideally, what we're trying to do is keep the patient stable until we can get around and get all the resurfacing done. If you look at Looney Road, I think that project was, it was shy of $1 million, and that was four lane miles of road, and so that was a very simple mill and fill, if you look across, we have 132 lane miles of traffic, it's a very expensive endeavor to go and resurface all that, so we're just doing our best to keep the patient alive.
So, I don't have anything on this one per se, but since we're not doing commissioner comments, and this is a related topic, I have gotten a very effusive and jubilant thank you from Stephen Kinder about...
The alley?
Doing the alley, and he was all happy and all up over it, because now he can park his van where it's supposed to be, and he can use the ramp getting into the back of his house that the VA went and put up for him. So, I take his thanks, and I pass it on to all of you.
Thank you. Any comments from citizens?
Hello, Kim Heisler. I don't know, I think it probably has something to do with that, but like High Street, Lower High Street, has that already been, like, fixed to make it longer as many years as need be, or is that...
Yeah, I mean, that is part, yeah, sorry, I also have Kent Kaiser, who's our engineering manager here, to help. Yeah, that is actually part of the mill and fill project, so that is not part of the crack sealing, that will be, we believe the mill and fill will start in...
September?
Yeah, I was going to say, it's not done yet.
In September.
I live on Lower High Street.
Okay, so that's what I was, I was wondering, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't like, so it's, right now, it's temporary until we get...
I think they did some underground first.
So, these are two different projects, and what we basically, the preservation program that we have, we're doing different treatments. So, a mill and fill is where the whole road will disappear, it'll come back, and it'll look, you know, brand new, the crack sealing, the micro-sealing, the micro-surfacing, there's a number of different methods, those are different roads. So the four roads that are getting that are Peters, Janet, Gene, and Edge. The other roads that have received, or that we already authorized approval for, I couldn't tell you all of them, but West High, you know, that's the substantial number of roads. We have, we also have a website that we're, our mapping system, our GIS system now has all of those roads shown, and we could certainly share that with you as well, but...
I did take a look at it, I was just curious, because I saw it go from like cutout to gravel, and then, right after I had my wheels aligned, hit it, and then realized.
They did something underground, I don't know what they were doing, but it was hurting there for a while, because I was bottoming out, trying to get to my house.
I mean, it's, it's so much better now, but it's still very annoying, so I just wanted to...
Yeah, I think that's the lead service line project that was going on, that was separate of the road project.
Okay, so that's going to remain as it is, then, until...
Until September.
Till the pavement program.
Till the pavement program, and that's part of it.
I believe so.
Okay, is, I think there's also Maplewood Drive, there's like a cutout there that's also be, like Lower High Street was, where, I haven't been there the last couple days, but it was like a two-inch drop-off, and if you didn't catch it quick, I mean, it was a jolt to the car, but is that...
And we can certainly look into any of those, I will say, obviously, with utilities in our road right-of-way, there are projects that happen, unfortunately, this week, we also had some, some line bursts, you know, there's things that happen in the road right-of-way. I, I don't know that particular one, but we certainly can look to see what project that would be with our utilities team.
Okay, so those are actually things that's not connected to you, but need to be brought to your attention, then?
I'm sorry?
They're not connected to what you're talking about, but they need to be brought to your attention in order to be fit in?
No, I mean, if, obviously, if that's a concern that you have, I mean, if you're saying it's a road concern, then yes, that would be brought up to our department, for sure.
Okay, alright, thank you, guys.
Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution R-99-24.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As a special commission meeting, there is no city manager, commissioner, or public comment?
Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I wanted to die for lack of effect.
Yeah.
That's Commissioner DeBrass's favor.